TMC, are you ready?
Before we start the town council meeting, I want to welcome everybody to our town council meeting and talk a little bit about what we're doing tonight and why we're doing it. We belong to the Maryland Municipal League which represents and advocates for all 157 municipalities in the state of Maryland. And part of some of their programs are what is called Banner Cities and Towns. And I believe for three or four years, we've reached that designation as being a banner town. There's certain requirements that we have to do. We have to participate in Maryland Municipal League events, attend their conference and convention, and then also during the month of November is what they call Municipal Government Works Month. And three years ago, I went over to New Windsor Middle School and talked to the eighth grade students about municipal government here in New Windsor. And then I thought, okay, two years ago, let's get the students involved and shadow the mayor and council. And tonight, we have nine students, eight from Northwest Middle School in Tawnytown, and then we have Mayor Rapids from Mount Airy Middle School. He attended New Windsor Middle School up until last year. He's been very involved with the town of New Windsor. He was our keynote speaker at our Memorial Day service and a few other things that we'll mention later. But at this time, I'd like to call on the eighth grade teacher that's been very instrumental in making this all work, Ms. Jennifer Moran. If you would come over and just say a few words. And again, I want to thank you for the third year on being a tremendous help to make this possible.
Thank you, Mayor Rup. It's been a real honor to have been able to be part of this for the past couple of years, and especially this year. I know we weren't really sure what was going to be happening this year, and I'm just so grateful that you've invited us back. We have a pretty cool mix of kids here this year. We have some from the Tawnytown area and some from the New Windsor area, and some from the Mount Airy community now as well. So I think it really shows that, you know, in the midst of everything that's happened and changed with our school system, we're still going strong, and I think that's a real positive. And the kids have really come together, and I know that I'm really excited to be here with them, and I think they're excited to be here tonight, too. For those of you that aren't familiar with the process, the students have to apply to take part in this event tonight. They fill out an application form where they talk about their community interests and needs that they see in their community, as well as their leadership goals, and they kind of do a little bit of an analysis of their own strengths and weaknesses as well. And it's a really good reflective process, especially as they start thinking about, you know, growing up and maturing and taking part in local government and state government and national government. And I'm really proud of these guys. They did a really great job on their applications, and I think they're really excited. They're all a little nervous to be here tonight, I think, but I have a lot of confidence in them, and I think it's going to be a really, really wonderful evening. So thank you again for opening up your meeting this month to us. And I look forward to hopefully coming back in the future, too.
One question, did Tawnytown agree to participate?
They did, yes. I spoke with the mayor of Tawnytown, and he's working with his council to, I think they're going to try to watch this evening's, the recording of this evening's council meeting, and then hopefully we'll be able to get our kids to go there as well, probably early in the next calendar year, so January or February next year.
And the reason why I included Tawnytown, our students from New Windsor are going to Tawnytown, and I didn't think it would be fair to Ms. Moran to just ask the students from New Windsor to participate and leave out the students from Tawnytown. So I talked to Mayor Jim McCarron, and he was on board with it. I sent him the link that's on YouTube from last year's town council shadow meeting, and he was on board with it. So we have, as you said, a mix of great students. I will say, just be relaxed, be yourself, because you know you're going to get a little bit better grade now since you participated. So just keep that in the back of your mind.
And the quarter ends Friday, so it's a good time.
There you go. Perfect timing. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your help.
I call the November 2016 New Windsor Town Council Meeting to order. Will everyone stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our meetings are recorded electronically and will follow an agenda. Anyone who wished to have a matter placed on the agenda needed to submit the topic to the mayor in writing by the last Wednesday of the month by the close of the business day, which is 3:00 PM. These items will be reviewed for approval. Anyone wishing to speak during residents' concerns should sign their name on the signup sheet, which is located on the table by the town manager.
At this time, we're going to do a little bit of recognition. I guess about eight years ago, seven, eight years ago, we start recognizing our businesses in town here, and also a year ago exactly, we start recognizing our residents when they turn 90, something Donna Albin, our clerk treasurer, thought of, and I think it's been an excellent idea and well-received. So at this time, I'd like to call on Sam and Doris Pierce.
They are the owners of Atlee House Bed and Breakfast. Doris is the current president of the Heritage Committee. Sam is a former mayor and council member. The mayor and council recognizes Atlee House Bed and Breakfast for their 10 years of service, but the number is second, 2016. Do you want to talk about the Bed and Breakfast?
It's really been a privilege for us to have a Bed and Breakfast in the community of New Windsor, and we enjoy and entertain people from all over the United States and from England and France, and so it's been a privilege. But with our advancing years, our place is for sale, and we hope that someone will continue it as a Bed and Breakfast.
Sam, a few words?
What Doris said is fine. We just enjoy being here and as part of the community, and we welcome anybody that wants to come and see our place, just come out and give us a call or talk about it.
Thank you. We're having another business celebrating 35 years of service here in New Windsor. After we're on the move, there are many local fans that I will be presenting to them, and all three employees are at work on Monday afternoon. When I went down to Hawkville, they had their 30th year plaque up there, so it does mean a lot to the business to be recognized, especially for all that they do to make this town a little bit better. This time, I call Jean Lorgel. That's why I asked you if you were coming. Jean has been a figure in New Windsor over the years, also past president of the Heritage Committee, but also for what this is for now. The mayor and council recognizes Jean Lorgel for 20 years of service on the New Windsor Planning Commission, November 2nd, 2016. Frank, could you do a budget review?
It's called cellphone.
Did you get one?
Could you like talk about 20 years of change in New Windsor?
To set up on by very quickly, I enjoy being a part of the government of the town, being involved in learning what's new to the town, how it relates to the county government. It's been great encouragement, and I have enjoyed it.
Thank you for your service. And with the next award, I'm going to call on Donna, because this is her idea, a great idea, really. You call the individual and the family members if they're here, if they'd like to come over.
As Mayor Rup said, about, honest, a year ago, we started recognizing our residents who had reached the wonderful milestone of 90 years and oh, so we've come full circle for a year, and tonight, we have one recipient, and Mr. Norman Birch, and anyone that wishes to come up with him. Come on up. And the plaque says, "The mayor and town council of the town of New Windsor on November 2nd, 2016, wish to recognize Norman E. Birch for reaching 91 years of age on September the 12th, 2016." Congratulations.
Would you like to talk about some things that have happened over 91 years?
First of all, how long have you been here as a resident?
Well, we've only been here about six years. We moved up from Florida. All of us old people do. We're staying in there. Usually moved down there. Don't ask me why.
The town of New Windsor. That's why.
Yeah, to come here. That's right. That was it.
You live in the town of New Windsor. And our daughter and son-in-law told us, you're going to live here whether you like it or not. We too love it. We're a great, great, great little town, and we lived in Florida, wasn't a real big town. It's a lake. Lake of Florida. So it was a smaller town. This is much better. Really beautiful town. Everything is so wonderful, the people that we met, and our neighbors, friends. Just a joy to live here, and we really appreciate it. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Counsel, go to tab three. Before you are the minutes from the October 5th, 2016 town council meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minute as written?
I think so moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second. So moved.
Are there any questions or comments about the minutes? All right, there is a motion by Councilmember DeFore, seconded by Councilmember Schneider. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes?
No.
All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes and the minutes have been approved. Counsel committees, go to tab four in your books. Public Works, Councilmember Kestner.
It's been another busy month for the Public Works Crew. At the beginning of the month, the Public Works Crew was busy cleaning up after the town's successful music of the main event. This included returning the barricades and barrels borrowed from the car road department. They also removed the temporary signage from the roadways and side streets and moved the gazebo from the corner lot into storage. As you may have heard, the Lions Club ball field has been underground undergoing renovations. The Public Works Crew performed some necessary grading behind the fence line to allow easier access to perform future maintenance. Disturbed areas were seeded and mulched to prevent soil erosion. I'm sure you have noticed the lead paint abatement work being performed on the diamond inn. Prior to initiation of this work, the Public Works Crew completed upfront tasks to support the start of this major project. They graded around the rear of the inn and out buildings to allow the contractors' access to perform maintenance and repair to the exterior of the building, and they spread stone in the rear parking lot to increase parking capacity. Trees were trimmed and weeds were removed to ensure the property was completely accessible. The archaeological equipment and supplies used on the property by the middle school students was collected and stored away in the barn. Final mowing, brush hog work, and tree trimming were completed at the Atlee walking trial for the 2016 season. Three areas of high grass were left standing for habitat purposes. As the grass cutting season has wound down and final mowing is completed, the Public Works Crew has transitioned to leaf collection. Collection started November 1st and will continue through the first week of December. Please refer to the town newsletter for the leaf curbside pickup schedule. This past weekend, the town held a bulk trash day. Dumpsters were available at the public work faculty located on Greer Lane to collect items that are typically too large to go in the regular trash. The Public Works Crew was on site to help residents unload their items. Although the volume of bulk trash was not as high as anticipated, many towns residents took advantage of this service, and two dumpsters were filled. Lastly, I'm sure you're all be excited to know that this week, the Public Works Crew has started to test the town's snow removal equipment. Winter will be here before you know it.
Any comments or questions for Councilmember Kestner? When will the Public Works Crew be picking up Christmas trees?
The Public Works Crew will be picking up Christmas trees on Wednesday, January 4th and 18th. Be sure that all your decorations are removed.
Water and sewer, Councilmember DeFore?
We have two items to share this evening. The first, an update on the sludge removal project taking place at the site of the old lagoon. As you're aware, the town installed a new wastewater treatment plant in 2011, at which time we discontinued use of the lagoon, or pond, or town pond, as we affectionately referred to it. Having served as the sewage treatment facility for over 40 years, there was a significant amount of sediment or sludge that settled on the bottom of the lagoon that needed to be dealt with in order to decommission the facility. For several years, we have been working with the Maryland Department of the Environment to develop a reasonable manner in which to deal with the accumulated sludge. It was determined that the sludge could be pumped out and spread on nearby farmland as fertilizer. The actual pumping process began about eight weeks ago, and today, over 2.5 million gallons of sludge have been pumped onto tanker trucks, hauled to a farm in the Marston area and applied to the land. This equates to somewhere between 500 and 600 truckloads. You may have seen these tanker trucks negotiating through the town streets recently. Although we don't have a definite completion date, the project is going relatively well, and we should be finished with the hauling and disposal phase of the project within a month or two. The second item to share will come to you as a public service announcement about disposal and flushable wipes and the problem they are creating in our sewer systems. For several years, we have been dealing with clogs and blockages in the town sewer system pipes and pumps as a result of the disposal or flushing of so-called disposable towels or wipes. While many of these household products are labeled disposable and some even labeled flushable, they do not break down or disintegrate quickly enough to pass through the system without causing problems. Disposable does not mean flushable, and flushable is usually a mislabeling by manufacturers. Please do not flush any types of wipes, towels, or other cleaning products into the system. So the public service announcement reads like this, "No wipes down the pipes." Say it with me now.
No wipes down the pipes.
Thank you for your cooperation.
Once the lagoon area has been totally cleaned, how will that space be used?
One idea that the town has been concerning is to develop multi-use athletic fields. We have had preliminary conversations with the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation that might be able to assist in such a project.
Any comments or questions for Councilmember DeFore? Public safety, Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. I will defer to the town deputy for his monthly calls of service report. I would like to thank the citizens of New Windsor for a very safe and happy Halloween. I would also like to thank the town's New Windsor maintenance staff for applying new white lines at stop signs at the intersection. I would like to remind the residents of Maryland law requires when stopping for a stop sign, you must stop prior to the white markings. I would also like to remind everyone that the Carroll County dog licenses for 2017 go in sale in December. Maryland law requires that all dogs and cats have current rabies vaccines, and Carroll County Code requires that all dogs have current Carroll County license. Sorry. Animal Control has received an increased volume of calls for dogs running at large in New Windsor. I would like to remind everyone that Carroll County Code states that all dogs must be kept under proper restraint and control at all times. Failure to do so can result in fines being issued and impoundment fees if the dog or dogs are taken to the shelter. This weekend, we turn our clocks back one hour in keeping with the policies of the local fire departments. Now is a good time to change all of the batteries in your spoke and carbon monoxide detectors. With the approaching holidays, I would like to suggest that everyone stay on alert for increased criminal activity that typically accompanies the holiday season. It is also important that everyone to remember that our community has school buses that pick up and discharge students. It is very important for the safety that vehicles come to a full stop when the bus has the red lights and stop arms activated. Does the mayor or any town council member have any questions?
With the upcoming holidays, what are some things the residents can do to ensure their safety?
A lot of our homes have fireplaces, and it is a good idea at this time of year to have our chimneys inspected by a licensed chimney inspector to avoid chimneys and house fires. If you are having packages delivered to your home, it is a good idea to have a neighbor or friend to take the package in when you are not home at the time of delivery. Please remember to lock all doors on your house and vehicles. Do not leave valuables such as cell phone, GPS systems, laptops, iPads, and/or gifts sitting in plain view in parked vehicles. We should have our lights set on timers when we are away so there is an appearance that someone is at home. Please remember when traveling out of town for the holidays to notify the post office and your newspaper delivery to have those services dropped, stopped as a collection of newspapers and mail will tip off a burglar that you are away for an extended period. If at all possible, it is best to have a house sitter, preferably a trusted friend or relative. Check on your neighbors, especially the elderly, and this is a stressful time of year. Be aware of phone scams and do not give out any personal information such as bank's account numbers, credit card account, and/or social security numbers to anyone regardless of whom they claim to be representing. Have a safe and happy holiday.
Economic development, Councilmember Benedict.
The design for the holiday billboard was approved, and this new economic billboard is now on Maryland 140 near the intersection of 140 and Deed Road. The new Carroll County downtown rack cards are available. These rack cards feature information about holiday events around Carroll County, including some New Windsor events. We have some rack cards here on the table, so please take one if you can help distribute them around the county. Carroll County Downtown is hosting a Small Business Saturday, November 26th. Planning event on Friday, November 4th, from 8:30 to 10:00 AM at Carroll Community College in room M157. Councilwoman Schultz will attend and represent New Windsor. We have also passed on meeting information to New Windsor businesses and the Union Bridge Business Association. Anyone interested in helping plan ways to promote Carroll County during Small Businesses Saturday is welcome to attend, but should pre-register, see the flyer, New Windsor Facebook page for more information. Councilwoman Schultz attended the monthly human services programs of Carroll County Board meeting representing New Windsor. HSP is having an annual gingerbread village festive, well, November 18th through November 25th. Application are due this week. Contact Matt Peregrini at HSP if you are interested. We have a flyer up here on the table with his contact information and more information about the event. Councilwoman Schultz, along with several other members of the council, attending Lea Community Meeting on October 18th for a presidential presentation on the progress of the quarry and convert. Councilwoman Schultz has been contacted by Union Bridge Business Association about attending some of their monthly meetings and plans to attend the November meeting to see how the two towns may be able to partner on economical development issues. The new town website is nearly done. The mayor and the town staff members are going to look it over and let us know if they are recommended. Any additional changes? Once their changes are financialized, the site will be ready to go live. Any questions?
What steps has the town of New Windsor taken to promote the community in the past years?
The town held a meeting for all small businesses. The town is developing a new website, and the town held its first music on the main
Community enhancement, Councilmember Green.
As the newest member of the town council, I had the honor of attending the fall meeting of the Maryland Municipal League as the New Windsor representative. I had the opportunity to meet with and learn from officials of other towns, large and tiny, about issues important to all of us, such as communication with utility companies, dealing with blighted properties and foreclosures, and community building events. As a member of the Legislative Committee of the MML, I also got to meet and discuss upcoming legislation that the MML will present during the state legislative session in Annapolis. I am now busy planning the town Christmas tree lighting, which will be held on December 7th, 2015.
2016, yes.
2016, at 7:00 PM in the gazebo park on the corner of Main and 75. There will be music and refreshments. A town council meeting will follow here at 7:00. While I can't take any credit for it, it was planned long before I became a council member. This historic dome inn is being painted and lead abedded. It is looking fabulous. It's much easier to see now why it was such a popular attraction in the 1800s and late in the 1800s and early 1900s. To have this jewelry stored is truly enhancing our community.
Any comments or questions for Councilmember Green? What do you feel is the best way for teens to get involved in the community?
There are many ways for teens to get involved. One example is Volunteer Beautification Day, which will be held next Saturday on April 29th, 2017. This is a great way to earn community service hours and lots of fun. The New Windsor Fire Department also has a great program for junior firefighters and selects fire prevention princesses during the annual carnival. Another way to get involved and earn community service hours is to volunteer at the New Windsor Heritage Museum on Main Street. There are volunteer opportunities and docent helpers and for cataloging artifacts and data entry, and even for runner at this year's fundraising bingo event, November 19th. On November 12th, New Windsor Heritage is honoring a local teen in Francis Scott Key High School student, Heather Rowan, at the Hall of Fame Diner for her service and accomplishments. Teen can also help out with the pickleball outreach. We have the only pickleball court in Carroll County and disc golf. The Boy Scouts are active in New Windsor, as are the Young Marines. There are so many ways to get involved, all of them fun.
Mayor's report, go to tab five. The past The past, the past month has been a very busy and productive period. Along with Town Manager Schaefer, we have been communicating and working with State Highway Administration officials to keep our streetscape project on schedule. We will hear more about the streetscape project under Old Business. In conjunction with the streetscape project, I have been researching two grant opportunities for rural, for rural infrastructure projects. These grants, if awarded, would help lower the town's cost of the streetscape project. Several projects have been completed or started in the past month. A year ago, I completed a special projects grant application with the Maryland's Department of Housing and Community Development for four hundred fifty thousand, for four hundred fifty thousand dollars for the abatement of lead paint at the historic Dealman Inn. Not only were we awarded the grant, but the project is well underway. A good portion of Dealman Inn has been scraped and painted. I encourage everyone to look at how well the completed portions of the inn look. Hopefully, the main part of the project will come in way below the four hundred fifty thousand dollars awarded. We intend on requesting the remaining amount of the grant be used for other safety improvements to the inn. We have, we have, we had a very productive progress meeting yesterday with the contractor and officials from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. Another major project going on is the remendation of the two sewer lagoons. You have already heard some information about this project from Councilmember DeFour and will hear additional information in Town Manager Johnson's report. One project that has been completed is the storm water management project on Root Drive and Sporlin Drive. This included the replacement of storm pipes, inlets, and new paving. We intended, we intend to continue applying for grants to continue upgrading our streets. I sent an official request to Commissioner Rothschild for the property at the corner to be given to the town. We have received a response from the county and will discuss this issue at the November work session. Town Manager Schaefer and I have been in many discussions about the future of the, of the former New Windsor Middle School and the Brethren Service Center. Both of these properties have invested parties that would use these properties to enhance the town in several ways. I hope to be able to get into more detail within a few weeks. In closing of my mayor's report, I want to extend my greatest appreciation to our town manager. As you either have witnessed personally of the projects going on in our town or by my report, we have, we have a lot going on. These projects would not be going on, would not be going as well as they were without his oversight. On behalf of myself and the town council, thank you for all you do. Any questions for me about the mayor's report?
Do you have a question?
I'm Dori San Pierce and I reside at 120 Water Street here in New Windsor. Mayor Rapids, I have a question. Is there an opportunity for students in the town of New Windsor to do internships?
Uh, yes, there is. Um, just recently I've cont-, or over the summer, I contacted Mr. Ruppe over a possible internship that lasted over the summer in July where I had a extensive amount of research and oversight in the town. And I learned a lot about municipal governments and a lot about town, county governments and state government, as well as fundamentals that should be used in local state governments and local student governments, et cetera.
Thank you.
How'd you get into that?
Unity Deputy Corporal Mark Towson.
Yes, good evening and welcome, everyone. The Carroll County Sheriff's Office handled 114 incidents for the month of October, following a summary of those more significant events. On October 30th, 11:49 AM, deputies responded to 134 Main Street Apartments for two residents who were involved in an altercation where one resident struck another with a trash can. The victim was referred to the commissioner for charges. On October 18th, at 11:37 AM, deputies responded to the New Windsor Middle School for a report of a break-in. It was discovered through investigation that on October 12th, 11:15 AM until 4:15 PM, eight juveniles entered the New Windsor Middle School through a partially unsecured rear window. Once inside, they, they did not create any damage, which I was thankful for. They did however, remove a guitar valued at seventy-five dollars and left the location. Upon investigation, they were identified and charged through the Juvenile Services Administration for burglary and trespassing and theft. On October 19th, 6:26 PM, 115 Main Street, deputies responded for a theft of a child's three-wheeled plastic Rodham toy, which was valued at ninety dollars. We believe that possibly it's been removed from the town and possibly moved to another jurisdiction. So, we do have a lookout looking for that, for that little boy. On October 16th, 10:58 AM, deputies responded to the 7-Eleven store for reported theft. Upon arrival, they met with a victim who was a non-resident and advised he was dropped off at the location after a party over in the Union Bridge area. Upon time when he was dropped off, the subjects in the car threw his wallet and his cellphone, or wallet, out at him on the sidewalk and when he, upon discovery, he notified, he realized that the wallet was now missing eight hundred dollars and his iPhone was also taken, so that is still under investigation also. He has no idea who these people were, unfortunately. Okay, um, as far as traffic enforcement for the month, I issued 70 citations and/or warnings concentrated on the problem areas as usual in town. On October 31st, I just wanted to advise you that we had a lookout for the wanted person from Atlee Bridge named Joshua Thompson. He was apprehended in Baltimore County and served with several outstanding warrants. That would be my report for the month. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
West, West Carroll Rec Council, Kevin Kornick. Not here. Uh, Fire Chief, Chief Tom Coe.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you for all your great tips during your reports. That was fantastic. Uh, the New Windsor Fire Department had a pretty busy month in October. Uh, for fire responses, we had 21 for the month. That brings us to a year-to-date total of 202 and we had 50 calls for emergency medical services assistance. That brings us to a year-to-date total of 487. Some of the major incidents last month that we handled was a house fire on Old Westminster Road where we provided assistance to Westminster. And then I think many of you probably heard of the hit-and-run accident that we had up on Main Street a few weekends ago. Like to thank Mayor Ruppe for coming to October's apparatus dedication ceremony where he served several roles throughout the ceremony. So, thank you very much for jumping in there. Events we have coming up in November. Lunch and dinner will be sold at the firehouse by our auxiliary on Tuesday for Election Day. So, after you vote, go have lunch and then come back again for dinner. We'd appreciate it. Uh, our staff is currently in the process of getting hydrant markers out for the snow. So, we're already thinking winter. The hydrant markers are going out so we can keep track of those in deep snow. And finally, just a reminder that we continue to have Tuesday night bingo. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
I think he has a question.
Oh, okay.
Will the Fire Department be doing Santa Claus on the fire engine this year?
Will the Fire Department be doing Santa Claus on the fire engine this year?
It's a fantastic question. We've been in communications with the North Pole and we're just working out schedules. But we'll be hitting all of our normal neighborhoods in December. The dates will be on our website. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Town Manager, Mr. Grant Johnson, Tab 6.
Lagoon decommissioning. Sludge pumping and hauling is continued. As the sludge is being removed, the remaining sludge is becoming thicker, making handling more challenging. Contractor is picking up a large amount of stones with sludge from the bottom of the lagoon. This is slowed hauling as trucks, the trucks must be periodically pulled from service and cleaned out. This Borline and Root Driving Pavement. Project is complete with the exception of a few concerns with the tie-in exiting, of exiting properties to the new grades in a few locations. Although there's not been much rain since the project was completed, the drainage system did seem to work well. Lions Battlefield Project. This project is complete. Once all the final invoices are received, a reimbursement request will be submitted for the program open space funds. Dealman Inn Lead Paint Abatement. Work is progressing well. The main street side of the property has been scraped and painted. Work is progressing on the high street side and the rear. It is anticipated that the project will take another four to six weeks. Representatives of the DHCD were on-site November 1st. Several possible additional areas of work, which would be eligible for grant funding, were identified. ShoreScan. The service agreement with ShoreScan has been signed. A generic website has been set up. Staff training will be, will take place in, in the next few weeks. Wastewater Treatment Plan Pavilion. Lights have been installed in the pavilion. This will facilitate operations during the dark months. The pavilion was effective in protecting the equipment from the hot sun during the summer months. NPDES Training. Carroll County conducted the annual NPDES Training. A point of emphasis was cleaning the streets, storm drains, and inlets. A credit is given towards the nutrient load reduction requirement for each ton of material removed. While New Windsor collects only a small amount, it is still good practice to implement. The county forester made a presentation on nutrient management. His, he emphasized not over-fertilizing. He pointed out that there is about a quarter ton of nitrogen contained in a foot of snow. So, there isn't a big need for additional nitrogen in the spring when there has been normal snowfall.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Johnson? When is the next Maryland Department of Transportation tour meeting?
The SHA tour meeting is tomorrow at 2:30 at Carroll County Office Building. The mayor and I will be attending on, or in, talking about the streetscape project.
Treasurers Report, Clerk slash Treasurer, Ms. Madeline Shiavi, Tab 7.
Each of the following balances given are as of October 31st, 2016. General Fund Balance is $263,592.99. General Fund Capital Budget Account is $49,507.35. Enterprise Fund Balance is $460,300.31. Enterprise Capital Reserve and the Three Rs Fund, the balance is $461,844.42. Loan Repayment Fund, the balance is five, 54, sorry, $54,477.45. Money Market Fund, the balance is $47,813.14. Lagoon Remediation Fund, the balance is $692,684, sorry. The Real Property Report for this month is 15 properties for sale, seven properties in a foreclosure process. First penalty assessment for the water sewer billing account will occur on November 7th. The FY16 audit process has been compelled and all necessary paperwork has been filed with the state of Maryland. Does anyone have any questions?
How's the town looking with the fiscal year 17 budget?
The town is now one-third of the way through the FY17 budget and things are in good shape at this point. I actually have one more item, but will defer to the town attorney at this time.
Maryland state law requires that all towns adopt a policy to address how public funds are invested. To assist the towns, the state has adopted regulations to govern these investments as well as these policies. New Windsor does have an investment policy in place, but it has been some time since it was reviewed and updated. The town clerk has asked me to review the regulations and prepare a new version of the policy and review and adoption by the council. I anticipate that we will have a draft policy for you at the December council meeting. If it is acceptable, it can be adopted at the January meeting. After that, it will be forwarded to the state treasurer office for review and acceptance. Does anyone have any questions?
If we decide to amend the policy in the future, does the amendment have to be approved by the state treasurer?
Yes, we would have to send the amendment to the state for acceptance.
Lehigh, Lehigh Update, Mr. Andy Ridgler. Okay, Mr. Ridgler is not here. Residents Concerned, are there any residents signed up to speak? Old Business, Streetscape, Streetscape Update.
This is a little bit of a fluid situation. Uh, at the last meeting, we reported that we had basically been told that the project was defunded. Uh, since then, we've had a good many conversations, particularly with Mark Crampton, who was the district engineer out of District 7. After discussions with him, he asked that we develop a timeline for when we would be able to engineer the project and start construction and get our financing to do that. So, we are in the process of developing that, a fairly, a fairly detailed, specific timeline, not just a, a, a quick wash. And part of that was, the engineers need to know, could certain information that the State Highway Administration had already developed be available to us? So, just today, I got some email correspondence that said that information is available. So, uh, within about three, three weeks, we will be presenting to the state our timeframes for doing the project. The, the idea being that if we start moving ahead, that will basically force the state highway to make a decision to fund the project or, or not fund the project and basically leave us kind of hanging if we, if we go ahead. So, that's, that's the strategy that we're going to employ, that we're going to go ahead and make them, uh, make a decision. And I don't know all the intricacies of funding, but apparently there are different funding flows and this may be coming from one flow versus another flow. So, it's, like I said, a little much to ask my assistant town manager here. But we will be talking about it tomorrow, which I was right on about that.
Does the council have any other old business?
I have a question for Town Manager. If, if the state is unable to commit to whether or not they would do the project, that would make a difference on how we finish the streets if we do our project, correct?
Well, that, that's the, that's kind of the leverage point. In other words, if we put a new water line in, are, are we going to be compelled then to spend all that money to restore the street according to their, their requirements, only to have them come back a year or two later and take it all out and basically have us spend, you know, three or four times the amount of money that we would have to spend if we were able to just put temporary patching in place. So, that's, you've hit right on the leverage point.
Okay. Thank you. Now, does the council have any other old business? New Business, Citizen Participation Plan Update Approval.
I have, yes. I will defer to my co-council.
Okay.
Okay, these plan updates are needed to be certain that the town is eligible to apply for government grants.
Assistant Mayor, are you going to go forward with those? Because I don't even have them.
These, these are documents that we needed three years ago when we applied for being a sustainable community in, in the state of Maryland. And what that does, among many other things, is helps with grant applications through the state. Uh, if you don't have these, you're way down on the list as far as being awarded projects. So, uh, every three years, these have to be updated. And this is the first of two that have to be updated. This also has to be updated for our grant with Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development for the lead paint abatement at Dealman Inn. So, we have to have updated, uh, plans on this one and one more coming up.
Do I hear a motion to approve to update the council, the citizen participation plan? plan?
Say so moved.
So moved.
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, make the motion.
She's second.
There is a motion by council member.
Just say we have, we have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments about the plan? All those in favor of approving the update say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes and the update has been approved. Anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan, update approval.
And briefly, this is one that in case a town were to buy a property that had residents living in it and we were going to tear it down or remodel it, we would have to have a residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan. To this date, we have never done that and I don't foresee us doing that, but still, we have to have that plan. So, and again, this is the third year of that plan. We need to update it.
Do I hear a motion to approve to update the anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan?
Make the motion to.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments about the plan? All those in favor of approaching the update say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes and the update has been approved. Maryland Town Manager Circuit Rider Program.
Town Manager Johnson.
Town Manager Johnson?
The Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, the DHCD, has grant funding available for a position to assist and supplement eligible municipal governments' administrative and professional staff. The funding is available to municipalities with population less than 5,000. The DHCD has funded this program for several years and this year, received additional funds to expand the program. There are currently two long-time circuits and two new circuits. There's enough funding available to create another circuit. DHCD has approved New Windsor about forming a circuit with Yenning Bridge and Skysville. The circuit rider position may be used to perform a variety of services. Typical services are planning, grant writing, and administration, project administration, and economic development. A circuit may have multiple riders for different services. The grant pays only the salary and benefits of the circuit rider. Municipalities are responsible for supporting costs such as materials and supplies, mileage, attendance, seminars, and incidentals. Representatives of the Union Bridge, Skyeville, and New Windsor will be meeting in the next week to develop the application. Ultimately, if the, all three towns decide to participate and the grant is approved and the official memorial, memorandum of agreement would be developed. More information is included behind the report.
Town Manager Johnson, can you have this based on the November work session agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Does the council have any questions or comments for Town Manager Johnson? Does the council have any other new business? Announcements. Does the council have any announcements?
There are a few announcements. New Windsor Lions Club Community Blood Drive is next Thursday, November 10th, at Windsor Station at the Fire Hall from 2 o'clock to 7:30 p.m. There is a huge need for blood, so come out and support the Lions Club. And also, every pint of blood that you donate can save the lives of three other people. So, come on out and help the Lions Club, help the community. Friday, November 18th, at a time to be determined, I'm going to be doing, starting a marathon. I attend St. Paul United Methodist Church and they have a very active food ministry. They're serving about 25, 30 families every week. And they have a huge need for donation of canned food and non-perishable. I will have a list on our website and, and the Lions Club website and Facebook pages of the items that they are looking for. But my goal is one ton. I will be, I will not be done until I get a ton. And I will probably be over at the corner of High Street and Main Street sometime Friday and I will not leave that, that location until I get a ton. If you want to bring food, that's great. If you want to bring money, that's also great. I'm going to allow each dollar to be a pound of food. So, we're looking to get a ton of food donated. If you want to come out and hang out with me, more the merrier, just bring some cans of food or phone so that you can call people. And if I have your phone number or know you're on Facebook, I expect you to be there because I'm going to be contacting you. I've asked Ed to check into some storage space because the, the fire, or the, the church can probably handle about 1,000 pounds, but I'm shooting for 2,000 pounds of food to be donated, especially in, in the holiday season where the need is, is that much greater. So, come out, support the church, support me. I greatly appreciate it. New Windsor Heritage Committee Hall of Fame is Saturday, November 12th, correct?
Yes.
Still can get tickets. So, come out and support the Heritage Committee and those that have made the Hall of Fame. One, a little side note about our Streetscape project. The individual that really got this started by coming to me was Dave Coyne with State Highway Administration and asked to, asked for us to apply for funding for the design, which was a million and a half. And he got that approved and that's Dave Coyne. And I just want to thank him personally. I will do that on another note sometime, but he's retiring from State Highway Administration after 30 years. So, I want to thank Dave for what all he did, not only in this district, but the state of Maryland, and mainly for the town of New Windsor. So, we give him a lot of thanks. Any other comments? Before we adjourn, I'd like to go around and we'll start with Town Manager Johnson. Just talk a little bit about yourself briefly, your age. Of course, we know you're in eighth grade, but if you want to talk about your family, how many brothers, sisters, hamsters, all that sort of stuff, and a hobby, go ahead and then we'll go right on around the room.
My name is Grant Johnson. I'm 13 and in eighth grade at Northwest Middle School. My family's here in the audience. I've got my mom, my dad, and my sister. Well, some hobbies in mind, like drawing, gold prospecting, and I think that's about it. Um, oh, sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
What? I didn't think of the word.
Just like rather counsel.
I'm Madeline Shabbie. I'm also 13, also in eighth grade. My mom is right there and I have a sister and then, you know, my dad. We have two dogs, Harley and Bailey, and we've got two fish, Armeas and Abel. Um, what was the second thing?
Hobbies.
Hobbies, alright. I really enjoy swimming. I'm on the swim team at the YSA and I really enjoy sewing, which is kind of interesting.
Thank you.
I'm Ally Green. I am also 13 from Northwest. And I have two sisters and a brother. My brother's a freshman and my sister's graduating this year. Oh, and my other sister's in fifth grade. Forgot I had another one. And I've been in Girl Scouts of the New Windsor for seven years now. And that's all.
Great.
I'm Sarah Hester and I'm also 13 in Northwest Middle School. And I have a little sister, she's seven years old. And I have a pet, can you take this thing? And I really enjoy playing basketball and drawing.
My name is Quincy DeFour and I'm age 13 and I'm from Northwest Middle School. And I have a brother that is nine years old, a sister that's a freshman and she's 14 years old, and another sister that's two years old, and a mom and dad. And my hobbies are, I love to play soccer. That's really my best hobby. I'm gonna try out for the high school team next year. So, I'm hoping that I'll make that and that's it.
I'm David Rapids. I'm 14, go to Mount Airy Middle, also in eighth grade, if you didn't guess it. I'm part of the Mount Airy Student Council where I'm head of the Constitution Committee where I'm charged with rewriting our constitution to make sure that it benefits all students, including those that are currently transferring into Carroll County Public Schools and those that are transferring from other schools located within the school system. Very, very involved in the current school board election where I've gone to many campaign fundraisers and spoke on behalf of several school board candidates. One of my hobbies are soccer where I play for South Carroll Youth Team and political science. Yeah, that's just about it.
I'm Alan Snyder. I'm 13 and in eighth grade at Northwest Middle School. My mom is right there and then I have a twin sister named Emma, a brother named Miles, and a sister named Hazel. And I have a fish named Shrimp and a snail named Mary Swanson. And I play softball.
I'm Ashley and I'm the only child and my aunt is here in the very bright blue. I, my hobbies are playing soccer and drawing and photography.
My name is Valerie Schneider and I'm 13 years old and I go to Northwest in eighth grade. I have a sister who's a junior named Wendy. My mom's in the audience and my dad's in Cleveland somewhere for the World Series. I like, I have two dogs. One's little, her name is Scout. The other is big, his name is Ming, a cat named Princess, and multiple fish. My hobbies are, I like to watch horror movies and read horror stories and I love musicals.
And your favorite musical?
Phantom of the Opera.
And I think you see why this is my favorite town council meeting of the whole year. The council reports are, for some reason, a lot lengthier on this night than what they are throughout the other 11 months. So, maybe I need to tell the council that they're going to be shadowed every month. But I hope you have enjoyed tonight, gotten something out of it. Hopefully, this is just the start of community involvement, whether it's in politics or making your community a better place in which to live. It's not too young to start and you can have a lifelong dedication, start right now, making that happen and be an example to maybe your brothers, sisters, neighbors, maybe even your parents see what you've done tonight. Maybe they say, hey, maybe it's time I get involved in, in the community in which I live in, if they're not already. But definitely need a big round of applause for these young adults. And also, I'd like to thank all the family members here. These young individuals would not be where they are today without your support and your love and your guidance. So, thanks to you. And again, to Ms. Jennifer Moran, thank you. And it's nice to see another fellow middle school student there that's also been involved in the town of New Windsor as well. So, we miss you guys, but good luck and we, we will continue asking for your support in years to come, not only for this, but other things. As you heard earlier, our Volunteer Beautification Day, if you can grab some students and come down the last Saturday in April, we'd be glad to have you. Any following comments from council?
Alright, so remember, no wipes down the pipes. Say it with me now.
No wipes down the pipes.
Thank you.
Anybody else, council members? Shadow council members, any comments? Did you enjoy it? Alright.
Yeah.
Yeah, we even had a dedicated treasurer over here because she doesn't like saying cents and the first general fund balance ended with 99 cents. She said, can't I just donate a penny?
Yes, you can do it.
So, David, take it away.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Go ahead.
So moved. Everybody say so moved.
So moved.
All those in favor of adjournment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Meeting adjourned.
Good job, David.